If we have a natural disaster, I don't have any problem taking it out of there. That's what the money's for, so I just want to make that clear. I think that if we're going to talk about rearranging a budget, just all of a sudden for something that is just coming up, that is not an emergency, we need to be doing it in context of the budget. I know, and I have no idea how many people live there, but I think it's important since it's, we're talking about people who pay taxes. The property, the taxes that they collect are not on people. The taxes they collect are on property. And at one time, their district boundaries were a lot different. And at some point after I got on the city council, they rearranged their boundaries. They got rid of Somas and they added a whole lot of farmland. And the farmland, and the reason was because at that time, there was a lot of territorial stuff going on, Mr. Kildy. And it was before you got on the Rec and Park District Board. But there was talk by different people about taking over, the city taking over the Recreation and Park District. So they, there was, I don't know if there still is, but at that time, there was a state law. And it said that one smaller district could not take over another district if the other district had more than one and a half times geographic property in their, in their boundaries. So Mr. Locker had it annexed and it was all voted on by everybody. And they are, they are very much larger than the city is. So a lot of that acreage doesn't have very many people because it's all farms. But they're paying property tax on the acres, not on the people living in there. So I just wanted to clarify that. I also was going to mention the grants. When we started talking about our library, it was long before the library bond, library grant bond was passed and before we hired Ms. Doi, Mrs. Doi, to write the grant. And we had a dream. We talked about our dream. We started working toward our dream. At that time, we didn't have any money for our dream. But by the time it came to fruition, we did get 16-plus million, 16 and a half million dollars in a state library bond grant. And it was the largest, it was the first and the largest because we had our plans together. And I believe that we do need to get the plans together for this, these facilities. I'm not going to say this facility. I think we do need more than a senior center because the needs are greater than just a senior center. But I, I believe we need to get the plans together. I can support the $8 million. That's what we agreed to in the study session. But I have to, Mr. Tremblay, you don't mind trying to put us on the spot here. So I do have to say that two years ago, you were the attorney for the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. And for one whole year, you were not allowed to be on the ad hoc committee. And for some reason, we didn't appoint somebody else. So Mrs. McDonald did the hard work on the, for the first year. And you were not allowed to be on that committee because you were, had resigned and the law says that you cannot vote on anything that has to do with a district or any entity that you have received money from for a year until the year after you sever the relationship. I believe that a year ago, or two years ago, you, two years ago in November, I guess it was, when you resigned, I don't know what it was, you severed your relationship, let's say, with the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. But I don't believe in your heart you have. I think you still have a personal commitment to it. And that is showing a lot here in, in the way you tried to show us up. So I can support the 8 million. I can support the motion as it is back here, not up in finance, as recommended in the staff report. And at a later date, we may need to know, to do more. But I think that needs to go through our regular budget session and not saying without any previous explanation, let's just do it here and we're going to take the money from there and here and here. Because we have a lot of other things that we really need to do, that we want to do, that we've all discussed doing. And none of us has ever come out in a council meeting and said, I think we ought to take money from there and do this because this is my project. Mr. Morgan?
I just want to make sure, make it clear. I was one of those who said, I can go with 10, but Mr. Tremblay would not kind of compromise with me and Jan to go with 10 and said, nope, got to have 15 or nothing.
And then you went to eight.
And that's why I went, yeah.
You gotta get three.
You gotta get three to get, either way. And so now that's how you got.
Well, let's just make it, you're, none of your memories were correct. I think the other two of us were down at five.
Well, yeah, but two came up.
And so two came up and two went down and one didn't. So anyway, we are now, everybody has had their say.
Can I respond?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to apologize for having offended Mr. Kildy sincerely. I apologize. I was not looking to insult anybody. I think, no, I was not. This is a project that I think we all agree needs to happen. I believe the city can afford to contribute more. I think the city is in a position to make this project go faster. And I simply want, wanted to express that there is a real need to work together to do this because we essentially share the same constituency to a very, very large extent. And I think that's partially happening in all the good work that's been done on the, on the joint committee. Secondly, I realize I touched a nerve here. The fact is that on July 25, we decided in a study session, looking at the budget, to offer $8 million. So if we decided in a study session and have that kind of discussion in a study session, I didn't think it was inappropriate to have that kind of discussion out here on the dais. I think that there was not a consensus that we decided on $8 million. And you're right, Mr. Morgan, I wasn't there for that. I think the bottom line is, is that we want, we want the project to go faster. I think the city has more money that it can put into the pot, so to speak, to help it go faster. And for the, for, we have to recall that when the, when, when there is, for the larger the debt issuance that occurs, to get this project done, the more of a burden it's going to be on ratepayers and taxpayers. We essentially share the same constituency. And you're right, I, I used to represent the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. And that was, and I stepped away from that a couple of years ago. But as a member of the community for 35 years, I also am recognizing the importance of these facilities to all of our city residents and, and district residents. And so I'm motivated by trying to get something done. And perhaps my, my motive, hopefully, was, was pure. You may not have liked the delivery, and I realize I touched a nerve and I apologize to, apologize to my colleagues, but this is a serious discussion. And if we were deciding how much money, study session, we were going to contribute, then the amount of money, just having that same discussion out here, particularly when we're asked to do or pursue a recommended staff report, is a fair discussion. So I realize that, you know, I'm party of one on this, so I'm not going to bother with any kind of emotion or anything like that. And I will, I will end up supporting the motion, but we have to continue to have this discussion going forward. Because I think the city is in a position to do more than what we are currently offering. Thanks for the chance to respond.
Your Honor, I want to respond.
Okay, I, I think what we need now is a motion.
Your Honor, I would move to move the suggested actions.
Are you on?
Yeah, you need to turn your.
All right. So now I'll read the whole thing. I would first move to receive and file the, you want to do them separately or all together?
All together.
Okay.
We can do them all together, can't we?
Okay. I will move to receive and file the PVR PD Adopted Final Senior and Community Recreation Center Facility Needs Assessment Study dated August 2018. I will confirm the city's contribution of $8 million towards the construction of the Plan Two concept and direct the liaison committee to work with Recreation and Park District representatives to draft a cooperative agreement for the hiring of a qualified California licensed architectural firm to further refine with public input the Plan Two concept and finalize more specific design concepts, alternatives, concept alternatives, parking analysis, and more refined cost estimates. Is there a second?
I'll second with a comment, Your Honor, and I can do that. Number one, once we get plans that we can look at and see what their phasing looks like, there could be some more. But we have nothing, for instance, I'd like to see part of that senior center done now. I mean, first phase, where these people that are in their older age need to have some, enjoy it for a while. Because you do it the way, if it's all at once, it's going to take two or three years to get that whole thing done. And I think we need to see some plants, some phasing things before we can even go anymore.
Motion, there's a second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now we're going to go back to council comments. And I will start with completing Mr. Tremblay's comments because we interrupted him. He said he was going to go on for quite a while.
Oh, no.
Well, it's his turn.
A list of items, I already went through the meetings attended. Just some items from, council comments from last meeting, just to follow up. I know that I had asked about, I had received, all of these are information or input from residents. One is about the potential or an apparent or perceived changes in flight path and more airplanes operating over the Nancy Bush Park area. And wondering whether or not there was some change in flight path. And I would like to see the staff follow up on that. I'm not aware that we've had an answer back on that yet, on that one.
You have two different flight patterns being affected right now. I'm on the board, okay? And I talked about them. I had to call them, find out what's going on. There are two, the other one is out by Lewis Road where they're supposed to make the turn at Lewis and come back. They're going out over a village at the park, a lot, in addition to what you're seeing. So we need to take that up with the board over there and find out what's going on. That's been happening in the last month or so.
Yeah, the, the residents who are out near Nancy Bush Park have been calling me saying, what's going on here? So if you, if you and Mr. Kildy will take that up, that would be great.
At the next meeting, we'll take it up.
Second is, I had a comment earlier on the Old Town Traffic Signal Synchronization at 101 and Ventura and Crosswalk Markings. Is my understanding correct that that's something that's going to go to Streets and Transportation Committee?
That's correct. Yeah, we're gathering data to be able to bring an item, a complete item back to Streets and Transportation. We're targeting for the end of October, pending the, you know, compilation of all the appropriate information.
Okay. And staying on the traffic theme, there was also a concern about the use of the Carmen median and people sitting on new landscaping during, watching the Christmas parade. Has that something that's been addressed with the Recreation and Park District?
We're analyzing that and coming up with a plan for that. We'll be having more information soon on that.
Okay. Another additional traffic issue, and then, these are all things coming from residents. When we are reviewing the project for stock and so on, I am hopeful that, I'm getting more and more calls from folks who say, it's just really getting to the point of being almost impossible to take a left turn out of Berry Street on 34, on Lewis. And I get it. I mean, it's been that way, right? For a long, long time. And I, we probably have very limited, if any, flexibility because it's a state highway because it's Highway 34. But I would appreciate it if we could at least, if staff could at least review that and see if there's any chance, particularly in conjunction with the development of that stock project, that there might be something that could be done.
I believe it'd be appropriate to analyze that, traffic impacts, obviously, with the development of that project, so that would be included in the review and analysis.
Okay, great. Next question is from a resident, actually, and Ms. McDonald's in my neighborhood, and that is, they, they love the new paving, but they just wondered when the covers were going to be taken off the storm drains. Because they're still there, a couple of weeks later. How long do those stay on?
Until the contractor's pretty well done, they will be needing to come back and do some touch-up work here and there. So it's a, you know, they put the storm water control measures in place one time and then come and remove them when they're done. So next week is the final week of scheduled slurry sealing on the remaining of the roads with some punch lists, final items to be taken care of into the next week. So we're, they'll probably be there for another, another two weeks.
Okay, another two weeks, okay. There was a matter that Mr. Clifford and Mr. Fraser and I were addressing relative to cellphone service, cellphone service issue up in Spanish Hills, Nancy Bush Park area, et cetera. Is there any update on Verizon's efforts relative to that? Mr. Clifford?
No, there's nothing, nothing further at this time.
Yeah, sorry, I'm being cryptic. It's just about the spotty cellphone service or coverage in that, particularly in that area, just seems to be.
I had to change from AT&amp;T to Verizon because I had to go out in the middle of the street to talk on a phone, couldn't, couldn't do it in my house with AT&amp;T.
And it, you know, in some ways, it, the coverage is just not really acceptable in that area. And it also redounds to being a, a public safety concern as well. So I'm just interested in trying to move the ball forward and seeing what we can do on that. So I'm not, nothing at, at this point, but it's, we're keeping it on the list to continue to work on? Okay. Three more. One is, it got brought to my attention that there was a, on Dawson Drive, we have oversized commercial vehicles being parked. And I guess that's a zone where it's okay to do off-street parking on, on those types of vehicles. But it was making it very difficult in the 500 block to turn left on Dawson where you can go like 40 miles per hour. Is there any update on reviewing that issue?
Yeah, our traffic engineering department is reviewing that location and we'll be getting back to you with, with, you know, results of our review.
Okay. One, one more traffic thing. Do we know, have there been any in the last year? I have a resident near Temple and Los Poses who is saying that it's her belief that, that the number of accidents in that intersection, particularly Temple and Los Poses, has been increasing within the last 12 months. And with a belief that perhaps a stack, a dedicated left turn arrow in there. Do we have any data indicating what the, whether there are accidents increasing in that intersection?
We do have that data. I don't have it with me tonight. I don't know if we've heard from the same resident, but we have, we have heard the same item from at least one person. And Traffic Engineering Division is taking a look at that intersection and reviewing accident history and warrant analysis for possible protected permissive left turns.
Is that something that might go to Streets and Transportation Committee?
Yes, of course, that would go there.
Okay. But you'll keep us posted on, on that?
Yes.
All right. And finally, I think my colleagues will remember this, you know, all the issue last year relative to Kmart and the Central Plaza Shopping Center. It's my understanding at this point, and maybe Mr. Norman or Mr. Vaca can address this, that, that property owner is not proceeding with a redevelopment that includes a residential component. At this time, conversely, they would be doing some form of new and expanded supermarket and, and commercial. Has, has the property owner informed the city of that yet formally?
Yes. So the property owner anticipates rearranging some retail commercial users, but does not anticipate doing residential on that property at this time.
Okay, so the city did get notice?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Hey, Mr. Kildy.
Let's say I attended a VRSD meeting, Utilities Committee meeting, and a VRSD. And it's okay with my colleagues and the mayor, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Larry Naismith. Larry was a longtime Cam Rio resident, mail carrier. His mom's still alive here. His dad was my sixth grade teacher up at Cam Heights. Unfortunately, 61 years old, died of cancer. Hopefully, I'll live long enough and will find a cure for that. I've had far too many people I've known struggle with this dreaded disease. And my hopes are that someday we'll be able to continue to make progress on that. So if it's okay with the council, we'll, we will adjourn in the memory of Larry Naismith.
For sure.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald?
Okay. I think we've all mentioned the State of the City, the League Employee Recognition Dinner. And I, I know I was late to that. Oh, is it VCOG? I know it was somewhere. But it's just so wonderful to see so many of our volunteers and we have so much to thank them for. And I'm so glad to do it, at least a dinner and they get this year a notebook, so besides our deep gratitude. I want to make a comment on the streets. They're looking great all around town. People have had to put up with kind of a pain for a while, but they really look good once they get the stripes on them and that, you know, really looks nice. So I know they do have some touch-ups to do here, so don't let them out of town until they finish. I want to bring to attention and remind when you were talking about telephones and cellphones and so forth. I want to compliment John Fraser of our staff. I had an individual who called, sent an email, the problem she had with utility box, and she couldn't get a response. And John had it fixed within like an hour, so it's, I might be exaggerating that, but she was, it was pretty darn close and she was quite impressed, so we do have to thank him for that. I did, as I mentioned, it was at VCOG last week. And I want to just talk real quickly, and I know it's late, but our major presentation was from SCAG, talking about arraigning numbers and, and the process that we're in. And if she said it once, I, she had to have said it 10 times, the whole process starts here. It starts at the local level. So I don't know if you've given them their numbers yet. So I hope you were conservative and, and didn't be an overachiever, as I think we've done in the past. Because we can blame the state all we want, but it starts here. And for instance, last time, you know, the city committed to over 2,200 units and the city of Thousand Oaks was less than 200.
Right.
It started with them. And they didn't have to gain much. Now, she did warn us that the state's getting a little more involved in this than they have in the past. But we, you know, it, we have to kind of protect our own community to start with because if we're over generous, we may end up even more. But you have already sent them in?
Yes. If you recall, we had a study session and we identified that we went through and analyzed our demographics in a very thorough manner. And the numbers that we arrived at were much less than what SCAG had projected. So we sent in our numbers and anticipate that they should make those corrections.
And keep on them. She did mention that they were reaching out and that they even had attended one study session and of course, it was ours. That was, they were impressed that we asked them. So I guess we want to make them our friends or they'll work with us so we don't get a higher number. This morning, I attended the first meeting of the Ventura County Consolidated Oversight Board for the windup of the redevelopment agencies. It's going to be interesting. There's some people who haven't served on those before, who are going to have to understand what our duty is there. And I think the city of Oxnard's going to be the most interesting to learn about because they've got some issues in theirs that we would never have thought of having in our redevelopment agency. So it will be an interesting experience and I'll keep you posted. We meet basically once a month, except during the holiday months. Yeah. And I also have someone I'd like to adjourn in the memory of. And I don't know if any of you knew her personally, but you certainly knew of the family, and that is Dorothy James Shalinar. She's one of the Sholley family. She actually grew up in the house there as ponderosa, and my curve I'm always doing, that's where she grew up. And so she was obviously one of our original residents here in the area. So if you don't mind, can you add her to that?
I was going to ask for her.
Oh, wonderful. And unfortunately, Mr. Lormer left, but I do have to address the issue that he accused me of doing something sinister. And I probably made a mistake and I will own to that. But at the forms, the topic of term limits comes up. And I have been very careful personally to not take this form in order to discuss my position on that, although I guess we did that a lot before we was ever on the ballots or accepted. But I did indeed have a flyer that I had used as part of my discussion. We had two events that evening, the first one being here with the chamber and then the second one was a dinner later on. And one of the questions as a candidate is how do you, how do you, what are your feelings on term limits? And it's something we all answered. I had a sheet, which is actually the comments that is public record, it's the items that we had had for our arguments in the ballot. So it's not something that's not already public knowledge. It's not something part of a campaign. It was done as part of my answers to the question, what do I feel? I certainly was one of the authors of this, so I'm not taking somebody else's and doing something with it. At the second.
You were one of the authors that the city council appointed.
You did, that's even, that makes it even better. At the second event, I actually held it up and said, if you have, you know, my, I think my comments were, there were basically choices. Mr. Tremblay had been there early talking about Measure E. There, no one that, at that event, was there for Measure M. And I basically said to the public that, you know, you really have three choices. You can vote yes on M, you can vote yes on E, and the other choice is you could vote no. And I held this up and I said, here is a list of the things that, reasons why I might say that, that you should vote no, but please do the research and come up with your own opinion. I may, I think four of you were there. So it was something along that line. So I did indeed take ownership of it. So it wasn't something that was done for mass mailing. I'm sorry, I'm taking a little longer than I should, but I'm, when I'm accused of something, I got to clear it up quickly. As far as what happened here, I totally forgot to hold it up when I got to my, my point in time and had left them laying out there, and I shouldn't have done that. So I will take ownership of that as being my mistake. But I do not believe anyone was passing it out. There were only, I think, 20 copies and I still, I think I have half of them. So it's not like I was passing out hundreds of anything that would fall under the political practice. And just to make it clear to everyone, I am not actively campaigning against either of them, other than the fact we were the, I was part of the, one of the authors on the argument, ballot argument. So I do not have a campaign running against them. So if Mr. Lormer had stayed, he would know that there really, I don't think, is anything he needs to file with the Political Practice Board. Because I think it, believe it's 200 pieces of mail that you have to.
Of mail?
Of mail. And I don't believe there's anything that says you can't use a piece of paper as part of your discussion at a forum. So I think I certainly had the right to do that and we all have the right to our own opinions. The mistake I will own up to is I shouldn't have left it out there unattended because someone might have picked them up not knowing where it came from. So that is my fault. But I do not believe anyone was passing them out. And again, I picked up most of what I brought, so. I hope you all understand that. It certainly wasn't done on purpose to be sinister and I certainly didn't say anything that hadn't already been said. Thank you very much.
Okay, I attended a ribbon cutting.
What about me?
At Spencer. Oh, I'm sorry, my.
Sorry.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get this meeting over. We have a long way to go tonight because there's study session.
One thing real quick, I want to get this, a couple of things. Number one, I work, when I go to that, what do you call it, the truck thing with the ranch every once a month, I work there.
Throwback Thursdays.
Throwback Thursdays. I'm going to be at the information booth this year because I volunteered. And I work when I go out there. It's not I'm not having fun. And when you go in the gate, you're supposed to be able to park in the back if you're working. Well, the young man didn't know, so I went around the back. Now, this time, they're going to open that back gate for us people that are, we that are working. And they made it clear, they sent me a memo saying, yes, you will be parking back there. So it's not like he comes up, he's standing there in our way, but it comes up and tries to hear something that's bad. It's not. And I didn't throw my thing away, I just said that we, we're supposed to be able to park back there if we're working. Anyway, I want to get past what he did. He said a lot of things that were wrong, absolutely. Number one, League of Cities, we all went to the League of Cities. I had fun at the league, but most of the time, I was in the attorney's area because I was learning a lot in the attorney's area. In other areas, I'd go into other seminars and I'd find out, we're doing that. Oh, we're doing that. We are very, if you compare with what other people are talking about in those seminars, this city is, is far ahead of a lot of things, just so you know. They'll be talking about stuff that we're already doing, we're already doing, we're already doing. So I decided to go to the attorney's and there with Tony a couple of times. And you hear some of the laws that do affect us and you're going, what are we going to do about that? You know? Anyway, I had a fun League of Cities, but mostly in the attorney's section. State of California, State of California, State of the City Address, Charlotte, that was very good.
Thank you.
Excellent. Information you presented was very good.
Thank you.
I, we, I went to the volunteer recognition dinner with all of you. And I think people were not so unhappy leaving a little early this time because normally when we leave a little later, it's cold. It gets colder. Maybe we can add some music next year to warm it up in the beginning. Maybe we can add some music next year to warm it up in the beginning. But that was a lot of fun. The Association Water Agencies, we just discussed the events coming up this next year and stuff like that. I missed our, at the Regan Library, because we had something else going at the same time. Air Push and Control Board was canceled this time, it'll be going on next month. We were at the Cameron Ranch House Foundation, Charlotte. I let her have something to say, so I won't say much about it, except that we had a board meeting and had a good meeting. By the way, someone mentioned struggling with the disease, the cancer disease. I was one of those that said I had cancer when I was a junior in high school. Malignant tumor. When they told me that, I felt like dropping. I'm dying. Well, took two or three operations, and you know what? We caught it all before it really spread. And anyone that has something that's strange. Mine was just a tiny bit of pain when I ran wind sprints in football. No one, I would never have known it. A malignant tumor of my thyroid glands. And then they cut it out again, took the other, and took a lymph node and said, hadn't spread. So anytime you find something that's different, that you can't explain, I go to the doctor, because you might catch it before it gets too far. That's all I have.
Ms. McDonald? I just need to make one comment, and I've been sitting here wiping my eye, and I'm not crying, I have allergies, and my eye is dripping, but you haven't all made me cry yet. Darn! And my mother's probably sitting at home wondering what I'm doing, so, yeah, it's my allergies, not that I'm, I don't know, I just started running yesterday, so.
Okay, I'll start again. I attended a ribbon cutting at Spencer McKenzie's. Very interesting. I attended the Cameron Ranch Foundation Board Meeting, the RDP 21 Meeting. League of Cities, last year, League of Cities, as far as I'm concerned, seems to, some years be really good, and some years, the sessions just aren't as good as I would have hoped. Last year, I thought it was excellent. This year, I was, thought it was pretty lukewarm. The sessions just didn't, they had good titles, but they didn't give us any information. I used to say, they're a place that can have five people and tell you what all the problems are about the topic, and we know the problems, or we wouldn't have been in there, so, you know, I want the answers. Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, I attended a meeting all Friday afternoon on the 14th, and all this afternoon today. So instead of once a month, we're now meeting twice a month.
Really?
Yeah, we've been doing that for probably six months now. An investment committee meeting, the volunteer appreciation dinner, and I got a lot of comments from people as I walked around saying, thank you for keeping it short, we really appreciate.
Exactly.
Really appreciate the way it was shortened, so Jeffrey, keep that in mind for next year. They really appreciated that, and getting out soon. They like to come, they like to talk to their friends, they like to have dinner, and then they don't like to sit in the cold.
Exactly.
And the other thing I want to tell you about is I attended a ribbon cutting for the sidewalk at Camrio Heights School, going to the west, which would be to Mission. And that isn't in the city, but I attended that because, Michael, remember this? I started being a community activist because the children in our neighborhood were redistricted from what was then Los Nogales School, which is now Los Primero School, to Camrio Heights School. And the condition of the walking route from my area to Camrio Heights School was atrocious. And Al Canuth, if you're out there, they finally got a county project that is called the Safety, A Safer Walking Route to Camrio Heights School Project. And I had to go to that, just because it, I had seen it a few days before, and it is a great sidewalk, and it really helps people going west. Doesn't help people coming east at all. So, I don't know, there might be a parent out there looking for a safer walking route. I think they don't walk that way anymore. I think they, mothers just drive them to school. But it was kind of a coming around in a circle thing for me. And so I, that's all I did. If nobody else has anything, we will now, when we do adjourn, it will be in the memory of Larry Naismith and Dorothy.
Dorothy James Shalinar.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, we're going to recess to the rest of our study session, and I believe we have another closed session.
Do we have to do anything relative to the sanitary district?
Don't you have a study session coming up? You need to, you're still in recess, yeah. So we're in recess.